Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th Board Meeting for the Dover Area School District. If you'd please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, Mrs. Benko, could we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Britton here. Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. DeSho.
Here.
Mr. Delauter.
Here.
Mr. Eifert.
Here.
Mr. Emmig.
Mrs. Herman.
Here.
Mrs. Maylie. Mr. RaHauser.
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, first up on the agenda is Presentations and Celebrations. Mr. Cherry.
We don't have anything to the senior schedule.
Okay. Next item is Communications, Public Comment. This is a three-minute period where you may feel free to come to the microphone, state your comments on anything that is on or off of the agenda this evening. If you do come up, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Peters. I'm at 298 Bermuda Church Road in East Berlin, which is in York County. I'm opposed to the new building of the high school, the new high school, at this time, not necessarily in the future, but at this time. It's an expense in excess of $65 million, and then I understand you're going to be demolishing the intermediate school and renovating the old high school, which, you know, again, information is sparse on this, at additional costs. And, you know, that doesn't take into account regular costs, pensions, maintenances, inflation, and unforeseen costs. I've not been able to find any information on Part A of the PlanCon document, which gives a justification for this, so I'm working blind here, but I'm assuming justification is overcrowding, or looking to the future for not enough space, or whatever. Last year, Washington Township Education Coalition had hearings, and during that time, Belinda Wallen had made statements and, quote, "In summary, we have presently a capacity without including the portables of 4,800, and our enrollment is slightly over 3,400." So the impression, just the math of that, we would have space for 1,300 more students in our facilities. This doesn't quite work out mathematically, but anyway. Later, she was stating that our facility capacity is 4,380, some of, some at, 4,838 some at the moment. We are currently enrolled at 3,400. It's a little over 3,400 at current capacity. So the 3,400 that, and that does include Washington Township. I guess, but the question is, is that, under oath, it was stated that there was all this excess capacity. So I don't understand, you know, I can understand that there is a problem with distribution of different grades, and sure, that would allow for reconfiguration or redistricting, whatever, but capacity seems to be there. So it's confusing. According to bottom line, it's somewhere between 980 or 1,300 more students in the current facilities. It was stated that they had enough space, considering births and enrollments, for multiple years in the future. So I'm not sure if I understand what's going on there. Mr. Schock was the Washington Township expert, testified and made a case that allowing the transfer of Washington Township to Northern District would be beneficial to Dover by delaying the building of new schools for years, reducing transportation costs and all the associated costs, as he believed you would reach capacity sooner than later, but the Pennsylvania School Board believed you and not him. You also made a case, oh, that he made a case, or you made a case that you could not operate without the revenue brought in from Washington Township. Mr. Schock also tried to demonstrate that if you would emulate some of these spending patterns of Northern District, you could save millions more. I was just curious if, have you considered withdrawing your opposition to Washington Township's transfer to resolve these issues, or what will happen if they win the transfer in the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Court case currently being reviewed? Anyway, I listened at the last board meeting. The Washington Township's bussing was somewhat problematic to the school start times, and there was an effort to get the times to no more than 55 minutes. Again, these are things that I'm concerned about, so something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have Board President's Communication. We did have a brief executive session prior to this meeting to discuss some personnel matters related to hiring this year, which we have added to tonight's agenda, and you'll see that under the Human and Fiscal Resources area when we get to that point. Under Other Communications, I did just want to share that if you have not had an opportunity to do so, please visit the doversd.org website. We have a brand-new website up and running, and I think it's a fantastic improvement over where things were. A lot of great information, ability to access stuff that you need there, much cleaner, easier format to navigate. So kudos to our tech staff for all their hard work, and others that were involved with that project for getting that done. So take some time to absorb that, if you would. And to Mr. Peters' comments regarding the building project, on tonight's agenda, you probably noticed that there are items related to that. I want to clarify for the public that tonight's vote is not to authorize the construction of a new high school. The items that are on tonight's agenda are to authorize the planning processes to begin, to form some of the teams to look at what might need to happen, what might need to be done, what the space issues are, things like that, and that's part of the legal processes that we have to go to, to get to the point of actually authorizing the construction of a building. So tonight is not to vote to build a new high school at this point. So that is all I have for Board President's Communication. So we'll move on in the agenda. The next section is our Approval of Minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 21st, 2016 Board Meeting?
Oh, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll go for the vote. Mrs. Benko.
Mr. RaHauser, your vote did not take.
What?
Your vote did not take.
Oh, sorry about that, sleeping on the job, I guess. Thank you.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23rd, 2016 Board Planning Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. What I would like to do, as has been the previous practice, is to go through each category and look at the items that are under each category, and at that time, ask for any questions or discussion on those items. So the first area under the Consent Agenda would be Curriculum and Professional Development. Are there any questions or discussions related to that item? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Human and Fiscal Resources. Are there any questions or discussions related to these items that are listed in this category?
I have, I just wanted to ask something. For the appointments, I see that we are approving Kristi, is it Christina?
Christina.
Orful, yes. My question was, do we, were we able to save any money in that, in that, the way we restructured the exceptional children?
We did not take the initial hit that I had conveyed the last time, so I think we're back on track to have the six figures, or the $100,000 savings that we originally had. And I do want to point out that Christine is here tonight, so.
Oh, hi.
And Jacob's also here, our new math teacher at the high school, so I want to say hi to them as well.
I did want to mention that, earlier I had mentioned there would be, in addition to the appointments tonight, and that is under the Professional category, is Samantha Patton as a High School Library and Media Specialist, a bachelor's, plus 24 salary range. Are there any other questions or discussions related to Human and Fiscal Resources? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Safe and Supportive Schools. Any questions or discussions related to that item? Okay.
I do, I do have a question on that, if I might ask that. I know initially, when that policy came about, came to us, it was a brand-new, I believe a brand-new policy when I was still involved, and then that was right about the transition time. I know there was some considerable concern about the language on it that I'm assuming has been worked through, and things have been added, deleted, whatever, with this being the finished product that everybody's now comfortable with.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Then hearing none, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda this evening?
You skipped Facilities, didn't you?
Those are individual votes, they're not on the consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I'm sorry, okay.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Benko. Okay, motion carries.
Congratulations to our two new members.
Welcome. Okay, moving on to Facilities now, we'll get back to that. Do we have a motion to authorize the Superintendent and Business Manager to develop a design team to begin planning for the potential construction of a new high school?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. What does that mean?
We actually began to assemble a team together, consistent of an architect, finance, construction, typically Dave in Operations, Administration. That's kind of an initial design team. From there, then we break up into subcommittees, where kind of what you did at Wagglestown, we invite teachers to come in. In this instance, it would be like the math department, the science department, the CTE teachers, and we began talking about what would the space actually look like, because the architect that we would actually need, that we would submit an RFP for, they would need that information in order to design a prototype of the space, because obviously the space is going to derive the total cost in the end. So really, this is just a group of individual, a larger group, that then breaks up into subgroups, that then go about planning and talking about what do we want these spaces to look like in terms of the facility, and then that information gets fed back to the architect.
So who, who are you thinking would be on the design team? I know you just mentioned a few names. I'm guessing that this is not, this is not the public, this is within the district, is that correct?
Right. Public would be involved in a lot of the subcommittees, when we would invite them out to talk about the design of the actual school itself, so they would have ample time to sit in, and we talked about what we want classrooms to look like, support classrooms to look like, what do we want an auditorium to look like. So all stakeholders, no matter who you are, would be invited to come participate in that. The design team is kind of more high-level, so Jen, Jared, Dave Nelson, myself, after the RFP is done, and we have appointed or approved an architect, the architect would sit there, probably someone with construction. We brainstorm possibly the idea of someone in terms of public relations to help us, you know, communicate what's going on and so forth. So it would be a small design team that would kind of facilitate the conversations leading up to whether or not the board then would decide to go, move forward with the project or not move forward.
Okay, so then, if you, when you have a meeting with the public, then are you anticipating those people being there?
Yes.
Questions, okay, okay.
And I would think that those public meetings would be work sessions, too, so it wouldn't necessarily just be a banter back and forth. It would really actually be a design group sitting down, talking about what do we want the space to look like, how would we do that? So some of those other individuals would really be the critical leaders in those conversations because they have expertise and experience in them. So a lot of those other committee groups would actually be work sessions, much like the committees that we participate in, where we're coming together, talking, sometimes disagreeing, but coming to some, some sense of consensus about what we want the space to look like.
Okay, now, I hope I'm not jumping ahead to the next thing. So are you anticipating, then, having the architects more than one, you're not going to pick, this team isn't going to pick the architect, right? Are we going to have presentations to the board, okay, and then we pick, okay?
Yeah. That's why we publicly advertise that, and we put that out there for bid, and people will submit, and then you'll get the information and be able to select in the end.
Well, what happens if you have, and I'm jumping, I think, but what happens if you have, like, six architectural firms, and do we, I don't, I don't know how this works. So do we have all six of them come, or do you, like, narrow it down to three, or how, and then, then you put, you ask them to come to the board meeting, and we hear, and we see their drawings at that time? Is that how it works?
I would, I would, I look at it more like almost selecting a board member, too. So you advertise, you put the information out there, you as a board can then pull in those individuals that you would like to hear from, and then have them do formal presentations to you.
Okay. Okay.
Because you'd probably want to ask things about what have your experiences have been, you know, what, how, you know, what designs have you done, what changes, you know, what have been some difficulties or obstacles, so you'd want to have some time to interview each one of those architects to make sure in the end that you're selecting the right individual or group to, to design the facility for you.
Right, okay.
And I just want to confirm, like Mr. Eifert said, this is just the step legally we need to take, and we're, along the way, we'll be taking into consideration all options and, you know.
If you look at, there's a flow, part of PlanCon, Part B is actually being able to look at a rendering, but we can't do a rendering without going out to look for an architect, so we need to have an architect to actually do that, because what will happen is, we've submitted Part A, we're going through Part B at this point in time, Part C is really the land acquisition, well, we already kind of have the land, so before we go into kind of Part D of it, which is looking at renderings and doing public meetings about whether or not we can financially support this project, we have to have that piece of it there. So there are many steps along the way. So no, we're not building, this is all just kind of drafting kind of some concepts and some theories to make sure that we, we have the ability to support this space, and in the end, once we have the space, we reviewed our finances, then you'll be able to decide whether or not you want to move forward with the project.
I just want to make sure that that's emphasized, that we are still taking all options into consideration, and we're not moving forward with one specific, because I think a lot of people are coming to me with that, that question, and I keep finding myself repeating, you know, this is not, this is not exactly what was said before, it's not construction, it's just that next step, so, just wanted to clarify.
Along that same line, I received an email shortly after our last meeting, questioning the size of the hallways in this new building, and I thought, that's really way ahead of the game, I don't even know where, where that would have come from, but does anybody have any idea where, where any information would have been questioned, you know, even available?
Yeah, because even with Crabtree's presentation, they had two design concepts, but they clearly said that these are concepts, and they weren't even specific, they were just kind of high-level, here's where student space would be, here's where public space could be, and this is what it could kind of look like. So I'm not quite sure where they're getting the information, maybe they're drawing from their own experiences.
I was intrigued.
But I don't think we shared anything in any of the meetings that we've had in the last several months about design, space, and so forth.
Okay, I have several questions. Is this for a future building, or is this for whether we make a future building or renovate the intermediate high school?
I think we're looking.
I mean, the intermediate school.
I think we're looking at a future building project, so this.
What I meant, could this involve fixing up the intermediate school, or is this only for a new school?
I think the purpose of this one is to take a look at building a new, a new school. I think that was the recommendation from the committee last month.
Well, the thing, okay, I have another question, is, last year, we paid $1.5 million in interest and $3.3 million on the debt. Where are we going to get money to pay the interest on the new loan?
I think we've definitely had some good presentations on our debt here within the past year, and our fund balance, our capital fund, our capital projects funds, we have a good reserve in there, and through the PlanCon A process, we were able to make sure we got our place in line on PlanCon reimbursement for a new construction. Also, there is a new federal, or not new, but a grant program, federal grant program that's come along, and it's called QZAB bonds, that are very, very low-interest bonds, so hopefully, we will be able to see some savings in that area also.
And I think Crabtree also presented, there are also some state grants out there that they've been able to secure for other districts to help alleviate that. I think part of the discussion also has to be the fact that if we ever do see some of the reimbursement from our previous PlanCon projects, that that money that's reimbursed back to the district then could be set aside to help alleviate the kind of two debts right now, because I think what plays into effect, and what we've seen in terms of the presentations, is right now, we currently have our debt, which we're paying down, most of it will be drawn or paid within the next 10 years, some of it beforehand, so really, we're looking at that window of opportunity between new debt and old debt. So, you know, we would have to take a look at, like I said, possible PlanCon reimbursements and others to set aside, so that during that time in which we're paying down our current debt, but also occurring new debt with the high school, we can use that money to offset any possible mill increases until that old debt begins to, begin to be paid off in the next couple of years.
And also, in some of the presentations that we had put together, we did some of those scenarios using, you know, five, six, seven million dollars of the reserves that we have built up throughout the past couple of years, saving for what we knew was going to come down the line.
So what you're saying is, you're planning on putting PlanCon, excuse me, PlanCon money aside to pay for future debt with the, pay off future debt with the new building?
Part of our strategy has been, has been conversations about any reimbursements that we get, is setting it as having, making a recommendation to the board to reserve that money so that we can offset that time period where we're still paying down old debt, but also occurring new debt until the old debt is actually paid off.
Because the general population can't conceive that we're going to be able to build a new high school and not raise taxes. And the status of our school district is 40% of our children now receive reduced lunches, and for retired, our senior citizens, if you're getting $500 Social Security a month now, with our kind government, you will get a dollar more per month next year. And there's very much concern among senior citizens as how they're supposed to keep going, and that's why I raised a question as to, you know, how we're going to, I know it sounds good, but people say it sounds too good to be true, and that's why I'm asking the question. Yes, uh, okay, you answered the question.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'll wait till the next one.
Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. And the motion carries. Next item under Facilities is, we are seeking a motion to approve the request for proposal, RFP for Architectural Services for a future potential building project pending our solicitor review.
And I have reviewed that and provided some comments.
And we have made the changes that the solicitor has provided to us, and they are updated on the document.
Okay, we have a motion, is there, do we have a motion?
No.
I'm looking for a motion.
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion?
Okay, I have some questions. All right, so we put this out, we advertise this, and then five architectural firms apply for this, okay, now, so I read the papers and everything of what they have to do. So they submit their interest, but they don't submit any drawings or anything at this point? No, they just submit their interest.
Or even, even rates at this point, they're submitting their qualifications, and so they're letting you know they're interested, and they're letting you know whether or not they're, they're qualified, so you can make a choice based on their qualifications, whether or not you want to negotiate a contract with them. One of the, when you're, when you are contracting for professional services, design, engineering, and legal services, you don't have to bid that, so you can negotiate that. So we're calling these requests for proposals, but you're not actually, you're not actually asking them to quote you any rates, you're asking for qualified architects who are interested to step forward and make their case for why they're qualified.
Okay, so then, then what happens? So there's, there's five, there's five, five companies that have submitted information, and we're reading over all that. Well, you know, do we pick it from that, or do we say, okay, we like you five, now go, go draw something for us? How does that work? So how do we know if we're going to like what they have, what they're going to offer, with drawing? What happens then?
I think, you know, I look at it as, they're almost submitting their resumes, so we'll have the opportunity to kind of go through that resume, take a look at their credentials, and we may ask them to bring some renderings, we may ask them to bring some other work. It's very likely that we could ask them, could you give us some examples of something that we could go visit? This is all part of kind of, you know, selecting the right person for the job, so I think we have the right to drive, you know, A, we could do some initial interviews, and let's say, out of the five, that, you know, we like two of them, so we bring the two back and say, you know what, we want to do some visits, we want to go look at some buildings that you have designed, we would like to take a look at some information, so we're kind of, they're courting us, and we're courting them during this kind of relationship, so I think we can drive what we want. So, I think we can drive what we want from them in order to get to that point of selecting someone in the end. So it's, it's, it too is a process. I don't think it's as cut and dry as, you know, we bring people in and we talk to all five of them, and then that night we make a decision. I think that would be hasty. I think, you know, we bring, you know, whoever applies in, we interview, we talk, we discuss who we like at first, and then we probably do some background searches on them as well. So, maybe, you know, can they give us a reference list? Can we call other school districts that have used you? Can we call other businesses that have used you? So, it'll be our due diligence as, as an administrative team and also as a board, to then do kind of all the reference checks on these individuals, so that we can get it to a point where we're able to make a decision.
And there's no statutory or regulatory mandate on how it's done. So there is no right or wrong answer to your question, it's how you want to go about the selection process.
Okay, so, five people present their information to the design committee, is that what I heard you say earlier?
No, I think that would be done with the board.
With the board, okay.
It's going to need board approval in the end.
Okay.
So you're going to have to approve the appointment of this architect. So I think this would be a critical step for the board, to interview these teams-
Right.
-to be well-informed, so that you can communicate to other people, you know, in the end, why this group was, or why this firm was selected.
Okay.
Because afterwards, that person then would join that design team.
Okay, so we as a board will be looking at several choices, and then go from there. Then after, do we, so do they design, I guess I'm concerned about what, what they're going to do, because I, I don't want to, I don't want to have one company and then say to that one company, now do a drawing for us, and maybe I don't like their drawings or whatever. Another thing too that was mentioned was, I don't know that we've ever decided that we're necessarily going to put this school where the middle school is located now? I mean, is, is there, is there some discussion?
And that's part of step C of the Plan Con process-
Okay.
...which is land acquisition. So, after the whole architect and the team, then you would talk about land afterwards. So there are many steps along this way, so-
Okay.
-that's why we keep reiterating, no building's going to pop up next year-
Okay.
...and surprise people. So, there are many, many steps along the way, and many, many conversations that we'll have. So this is really just about fulfilling part B of the, of the Plan Con process. C, we'll talk about land.
So when, when it was said about approving a firm next board meeting, I saw that somewhere. Is that, is that a good idea? Is that, because, is that kind of like, oh my golly, gee whiz, now we have these people, we have to get this done by next board meeting? Or can we take some time? I don't want to rush into this. I'm concerned about the fact that we're going, we're already like $40 million in debt, and then taking on another 60. That's $100 million, people. And, so if we just go a little slow on this, we can get some more paid down, which I believe I heard you say anyway. Yeah, that's a lot of money. A whole lot of money. Okay. Okay, I feel better now. Thank you.
Talking about Plan Con, I found out yesterday, and I didn't call them, that the Pennsylvania School Board Association has a pamphlet on Plan Con. And I think it'd be nice if we would get a copy for all the directors, that way we could look at it and start to educate ourselves. Because I was told if you screw up in one step in Plan Con, you're out.
We can make sure you get all that information.
And I think that would be good, because, you know, questions are asked, none of us has ever been through this. The only one that's been through this is absent tonight, so everybody else is green hands.
We will also put on our website links to the various stages of Plan Con, and it describes each step of the Plan Con process. So along with a copy that we can provide to you, there will also be each step defined, what we will be doing, what we will need to do, the timelines and so on and so forth, so we can plan out our, our timeline.
Any other questions or discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, Mrs. Benko. Okay, moving on to board assigned representatives. First on the agenda would be the Dover Eagle Foundation. I have nothing to report on that, the foundation is in a summer hiatus at this point. Next area would be the York Adams Academy. Mr. Emig is not here tonight. Mr. Cherry, do you have anything to add on that?
No.
Okay. York County School of Technology, Mr. Delauter.
I have nothing to report at this time.
LIU Special Education, Mr. Cherry or Mrs. Benko?
No, I think I sent out the minutes from their last meeting, so.
Were there any questions for Mr. Cherry on those minutes that were sent out? Okay, Legislative, Mr. Ralhauser.
Well, they finally got a budget done. And the other thing I found is that they have a, supposed to be a uniform formula now for school funding, as far as students.
Any questions for Mr. Ralhauser?
If, if I could just let you know, in front of you tonight, I did a 2016-17 state budget update, from, you know, what we thought originally to what actually happened now. Detailed on your report is the prior year actuals, what we got, about 13.4 million. We budgeted, in our budget that was approved in May, pretty much the same that we received in 15-16, with a $80,000 increase to Ready to Learn, based on what we had known then, for 13.5 million. So after the state budget update and passing, we are projecting 13.9 million, which was about a $370,000 increase from what we had projected to begin with. So you can see our, our budget variance of 376,910. And then the increase in education funding from the state for 16-17 compared to prior year was $457,625.
Just a curious question, we just had a discussion about Plan Con money and putting money back toward interest, since we weren't really planning on that money, would, would it make sense to use that increase there if that actually comes to fruition to, to do that with it?
I, I, I think we, we definitely could do that, and hopefully there'll be other savings along the way. This extra monies would reduce the amount that we were using out of fund balance, and then if you wanted to reserve funds, that we have left over in fund balance at the end of fiscal year 16-17, we could definitely do so and move it to the capital projects fund.
Any questions for Mr. Ralhauser or Mrs. Benko? Okay, next is PSBA, Mrs. Britton.
Of course, the big news is the budget, and a lot of the other articles that I've been seeing, a lot of schools are dealing with their deficits, whereas, you know, we are, I want to stress again, lucky enough to, to not be in that situation. There are also a few articles on charter schools and how that's affecting school districts. So I'll continue to kind of monitor that, but other than that, that's, the budget was the big.
Any questions for Mrs. Britton? Okay, we'll move on to the Dover Industrial Development Authority, Mrs. Herman.
Our meeting's next Wednesday.
Okay, next is superintendent's report, Mr. Cherry.
Just a few updates, I just wanted to alert all our families that on August 1st, we will be launching the Family Access Portal through Skyward. So families should be expecting to receive two emails, so whatever current email they have in MMS, we are utilizing that email. So you will receive two emails. One is just a verification of the email to say, is this the email going to the correct person? The second email will actually give them access to the Family Access portion of Skyward. So they'll be able to go in, verify their students' information, update phone numbers, addresses, emergency contact individuals, they'll be able to see lunches, be able to load money for their lunch program, they'll see their child's schedules, teachers, and so forth. So, it's fairly blank right now, obviously because school's not in session, but as school becomes, as school opens up in August, then parents will be able to see, you know, what kids are selecting for lunch, what they're depleting in their lunch account, they'll be able to see health reports or records if they've visited the nurse. Parents will be able to blog with their teachers if they have questions, and teachers will be able to assign and blog with parents as well. So, look for that on August 1st. We're also developing some training sessions, so that parents can come in and also be trained in that particular portal, and we can assist them with that. So, we'll be doing a global connect with that, putting it up on our webpage, but I just wanted to take the time to make sure that we publicly said August 1st will be the launch of that, of that access for, for families.
Could I just make one comment on that? I was asked to be a guinea pig today for that email testing and stuff, so I went through the process and got into it. It's outstanding. I'm very impressed with what I saw there, the ease of getting to the information and the way it's laid out, the clarity of it, it's, it's very nice, very impressive, and I think everybody will be pleased with this when it rolls out in the community.
Yeah, I was a guinea pig as well today, and I'm really excited about it, so.
I think the ability, the two-way communication, I think a lot of times communication can be one-way, but I think this really provides the opportunity for two-way communication, so your ability as parents to, you know, directly talk with each one of your students' teachers, and also the teacher back with the parent and even the student. So, there's even online, you know, scheduling parent conferences and so forth, all of that's done right at the ease of a click, and things of that nature. Even report cards are launched there too. So I think parents are really going to have the ability to, to see, you know, not only what's going on right now, but also historically what has happened with their child, because all previous test scores and information are also loaded there too. So, as a parent, you're going to really have access to your child's information really at a click. So I think it'll be, like as Nate said, and also Amy, I think, you know, it's going to give you a lot of information for your children and really to be informed. Wanted to thank Kathy Guyer and her team for getting extended school year.
I do have one question for that. Is it multiple logins for students? Say, I have two in different grades-
Nope, you'll see everything for one kid.
Okay.
So there'll be a dropdown menu, so you can kind of select one kid.
Okay.
There'll be some areas where it's all of your students.
Okay.
So I, I was looking at one of the things, you can be notified as a parent if any of your children get below, and you can choose the number. So let's say, if you get below a 70, you can actually go in there and build that filter. So, anytime any of your kids get below a 70 or above a 90, you automatically get an email. So by the time kids get home, you get home, you can say, hey, today I got an email, and I noticed in math, you, you know, you got a 63 on your homework assignment. So, there, there are certain filters where it's for all of your kids, but then you can select certain areas for just particular children.
So we, the parents, are going to love this, our kids are going to absolutely-
Yeah.
Right, yeah, okay, good.
Students might be miserable, those parents are going to be very informed about your, your students, so. As I was saying too, I wanted to thank Kathy for extended school year. I know, it started at a very peculiar time of year, right around the 4th of July, so there was a lot going on, so we had that going on at Wagglestown, and we were juggling a lot to get that going. So I wanted to thank you for coming in during the 4th and getting things set up. You were there bright and early with your team, so I think we're off to a great start, and our kids are benefiting from it. The last thing, I wanted to thank all of our schools. At the end of June, we had a three-day conference with our instructional leadership team, so we spent two days at North Salem as a district team, and also the six teams from each one of the schools. We kind of looked at what's going on, education nationally, at the state level, and then schools were really given time to reflect about what's going on in their own particular building, and they were given a set of reflective questions to think about. And now schools are in the process of scheduling additional meetings throughout the summer, and I look forward to the work that they're doing. I think they had tremendous conversations, they, you know, kind of held the mirror up and really began to dialogue about what's going on in their building and what they could do to actually make it, make it a better place for themselves and their students. We ended it two days by going to ski Round Top for a ropes course, so the administrative team went up, as well as the six school teams, and we spent four hours doing a number of activities and so forth. We worked together, each one of the teams went off, they each had their own guide, so even the administrative team, we were there. So Dave and Bobby and Kathy and myself and Jamie, we all participated in a number of activities, and, and we worked hard. It ended with, the last hour, teams were allowed to do the high impact, so it was good seeing Jared and others climb and scale trees, and you were going across the rope at one point in time when I heard, I'm done, I'm done, I'm coming down. And he zipped quickly to the ground, and I think Dave Nelson actually took the zip line through the canopy of trees, down after climbing up a net. So, I think it was, you know, many teachers were commenting that they were looking at that day as going to be their worst experience of their life, and many of them left by coming saying, you know what, this was absolutely the best thing that our team could have done, the best experience for me, they, they were thankful. So, we ended it with lunch, and everyone was able to kind of convene and move on to the 4th of July break that was coming up. So, you know, I, I look forward to the work that the teams are doing throughout the year, it was, it was a good time. We actually celebrated each one of the school teams, and if you take a look, when you go outside the boardroom tonight, there's a bulletin board there. We awarded each one of the school teams with a specific honor, so we have their pictures up there. That'll be a bulletin board that we keep running throughout the year, because what will happen is, each one of the school's teams will select a teacher who represents that particular initiative in their building, and then every month, that teacher will, at a faculty meeting, award another teacher, they will nominate and select and honor another teacher. So they'll be sending us that information on a monthly basis, and we'll be able to celebrate the school staff throughout the year. So I encourage all of you to take a look at the bulletin board on the way out. I think it was a real step forward for our district in terms of working together as teams and solving those problems within the buildings, because that's where all the answers are at. So that's my update.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Cherry?
Did we have any workman's comp claims from-
No, that was, there were a few who tried, I mean, I think Bobby at one point in time fell off the, it was funny, we had one activity where we had to, as a group, stand on some tuba floors and walk as a group to make the tuba floors work. Now, in theory, it sounds very simple, but when you have nine people lined up, all trying to work together, and no one's allowed to talk but Deb Curry and Amy, so they were our speakers, and poor Bobby was at the front and got shoved down, so at one point in time we had to call the medic and pull up Band-Aids and so forth, but it was this, for as simple as a task, it was the longest one we had, I think it was almost 45 minutes that we were trying to get that, those two boards to move six feet, and, and so forth. And we couldn't argue, we couldn't do anything, we could just, you know, sit there and, and have Deb Curry kind of shout, left foot, or right foot, or left foot, or- We broke a rule and we had to start all over again, and we were back to right foot and left foot, but as I said, I, I think it was a good time, and I actually think our middle school was looking about, looking at taking maybe their seventh graders this year, just to, you know, as they left their elementary experience, and now they're moving into a middle school experience, they thought maybe some of those team-building activities would be good for our seventh grade students. So, we're kind of negotiating some of that right now to, to begin to take those middle school students up there to experience our team-building activity.
Great. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is our miscellaneous category for any other comments or observations from our board members. Does anybody have anything this evening?
Yeah, I should have asked it earlier, I guess, when we were voting on things. Is Mr. Kegy done now?
Yes.
Or is he still helping out?
He's done.
He's done.
Yeah, he was done in June.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
In, in light of the comments that were made tonight about, from the public perception of this potential building project, is there a way that we could get maybe a, an overall overview of what is driving this decision? It's certainly a lot more than just student enrollment. And is there a way to get that in a public place, that the general concept could be perceived for someone that may not be at a board meeting, but might, you know, be out there talking in the community and wondering why we're even entertaining this notion? Because on the surface, it's, it does look like a lot of money, it does look like a project that, you know, the average person may not understand why. And it hasn't been for lack of effort to try to get the public to come and participate and do walkthroughs with the buildings, and see what the condition of the buildings are, and come and hear presentations, and understand what we've been hearing for the last year. But a lot of- But a lot of people just don't do that. So the only thing that they know is what they hear in the community. So the new website might be a great place to do like an overview. It's just a suggestion. Maybe, maybe we list, these are the reasons why we're even entertaining this notion, and so that the public can get a better feel without just hearing it through the grapevine. Just a suggestion.
Maybe you were easy dropping in on our conversation. We actually, Jen, Brad and I met earlier today, and we had about a ninety-minute conversation just about that. So we are creating a link for the website. So what we're doing right now is we're collecting all information. Amy is combing through every board agenda in minutes since I've begun, because I still remember Dan Singler being there in August of the first year I was here, saying, why am I hearing rumors about a new high school going to be built? So this is something that I kind of walked into that has been bubbling and percolating. So our goal is to kind of say, when to just begin, and what are we doing, and kind of list all the things that we've done, at least in the two years that I've been here, that have been leading up to this conversation, give the rationale and so forth. So it'll be a separate link. We're going to, our website gives us the ability to provide attachments, information, things of that nature, so that people can see that this has been an ongoing conversation for, for a number of years. So we're actually going to do that. I think we're trying. I know Brad's on vacation for the next week, so I think we're meeting when he comes back with a launch date somewhere the first week in August. So then we can maybe even do a formal presentation on that site at the August board meeting.
Is there a way within that section that a site visitor could ask a question, that we could then respond to them through an email or a phone call or whatever?
We can simply.
Because obviously, everybody can't come to board meetings and, you know, ask those questions from a scheduling standpoint, but it'd be nice to be able to get that feedback.
Create a link that says questions, and then they can load up an email that will go to Jen, Brad or myself.
And I would even suggest maybe pushing something out on Facebook with a link to the website, because I know a lot of chatter happens on Facebook.
Okay.
I think that's a next, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I think that's an excellent idea, because for those of us who live in the district, and my husband got nailed today by a guy he knows, and whoa, he was not happy. We're building a new high school, what are you talking? So if we could, any of us could direct, you know, and I like Nathan's idea about the questions.
What about the people who don't have this technology?
We also talked about that, too, so that we would also have a print environment, so that we could set up small stations in public areas. So Seth Grove's a library, so we would also kind of, we talked about a pamphlet and other materials. The biggest thing right now is kind of collecting the information, getting it on the site, and then we said we would lift that information and create a booklet so that we could publish it and then put it in public places throughout the district.
Biggest comment I got at the Dover Alumni Association picnic on Sunday was, we don't get newspaper articles no more. If it's not put in the newspaper, and you don't have to get the newspaper, but you can get articles that are published in the newspaper. And that was a question that was asked to me, why there isn't more information put out for us? Because we're just left out.
Who's we?
What?
Who's we?
The ones at, right at Alumni Association meeting. The senior citizens.
Okay, so the older folks, kind of without, without the technology, okay.
You know, the senior.
Right, okay. I didn't know who you were.
Okay, well, that there, and there was one there.
Okay.
But it made it gradually at nineteen forty. But that was a concern, you know, that information, you know, in some, some places you can't get, you know, online, because the technology isn't out there. And that was a question that was raised.
The library has that capability, correct? They have public internet access. And if we have a written form there, we could also have, I know the librarians are very helpful, and maybe even the senior center, we could put some of the booklets in here at the administration building, so people would have.
We're going to kind of Candace the entire, the entire district, to make sure that every possible public area, grocery stores, you know, churches, things of that nature, would all get the information.
Because I know we used to get a newsletter years ago, but I know it was a cost, you know, a decent cost for the district. And I was actually thinking about that on my way home today, about electronic versus that, so.
In a project of this magnitude, it might not hurt for us as a district to actually do a mailing, you know, similar to a newsletter in the past, at least maybe at one time, that, you know, here's what is being discussed, here's some of the rationale behind that. It may be worth the investment in the long run to help, you know, move this project in the direction that we might need to move it in, if the community has a greater understanding as to what's going on. So, you know, to Mr. Rahauer's point, not everybody has a computer and can get on to it. You know, so if we do some sort of a mailing, that might address some of these issues. Because some people might not be able to get to the library, you know, and stuff like that, too, so.
When I was actually thinking of the possibility of a town hall type meeting, you know, I hate to suggest meeting after meeting after meeting, but maybe something where we could have Seth Grove come in and explain PlanCon, because I know he's done a lot with PlanCon legislatively. I think it would be good to hear his perspective and get the communities, get his site, his input out there to the community and, you know, take that opportunity to bring everybody up to speed at about the same time.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from board members tonight? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to our last public comment period. This is a two-minute period for items on or off of the agenda. If you're interested in making any remarks, please come to the microphone, and we already have your name and address, so you don't need to do that again, Mr. Peters.
I was going to say my address is the same.
You haven't moved, right?
Haven't moved. I just wanted to, I forgot to thank Mr. Cherry for having sent me that information that I'd asked for. Very useful. In, in that information, though, is something that I think Mr. Rahauer would, would be interested in, the spreadsheets that were there, basically showing if we, if we do borrow that money, how is that going to affect the debt loads and so forth? It's only addressing for the new high school, but it shows that there will be tax increases every year for like seven years. Quite a lot. And I think that's what's, what's coming up with that. And as far as PlanCon is concerned, what I saw and what I, what I've discovered so far is PlanCon is only going to contribute like six percent to this sixty-five million dollars. So that's, the rest of that is strictly from, from the taxes. I would really love to see, and it's a great idea, share this information, because it, it does turn in my head all the time, the Part A that was submitted to PlanCon, which is supposed to be the justification and so forth. That would be wonderful to be able to see. I tried finding that out there in PlanCon, and it doesn't exist. But I, you know, it should. Walking through the buildings, that was a great idea. I mean, I'd love to see, you know, why, why the consideration of demolishing the intermediate school after the, the new high school is built. Is the building that bad? I don't know. Or is it just that there's too much space then? I don't know. Newspapers, what newspaper would, would you normally put this information in? Because Washington Township, you know, we deal with the banner, because that is what the township uses, you know, and so forth, for public notifications and what have you. Is it possible to make sure that if you're going to put something into the York paper, that you put something in the banner as well? Just, you know, so we could see that. That's it. I just couldn't pass this up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anybody else for public comment tonight? Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bill Barkby. I reside at 127 Cranbrook Drive here in Dover Borough. I appreciate all the comments and greatly look forward to the information that I understand now will be coming out, hopefully in the newspaper. Hope you do cover Washington up here for this gentleman back here. Out of all the conversation that I heard this evening, I do have one question that I'm very concerned about. Number one, I do want to find, I do want to hear the figures and the background and the history and everything leading up to why this new school building is actually needed. I heard an awful lot of conversation earlier tonight about architects. And I don't quite understand why an architectural firm is needed at all. My understanding is the state already has plans available, cookie cutter plans, and that the reimbursement on those, if we utilize the state plans, the reimbursement from the state, I understand, is higher. Am I correct on that or not?
That is something we would have to look into and see if those plans were feasible.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is something we would have to look into, to see if those plans are actually feasible to where we would have, what land we would have to build on, or what renovations would have to be done.
Well, I can understand that, but wouldn't that make sense to start out in, with those plans first before going to the architects? An answer? Does that make any more sense to check the state plans out first before going and pulling in five or six architectural firms?
We would have to see the feasibility of the land.
I'm sorry?
We would have to see the feasibility of the land and what we would need to do.
Will you be doing that?
We can check into it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday, August 16th, at seven o'clock PM, so please mark your calendars for that. If there is nothing else tonight, I seek a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say yes. Yes, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We're adjourned.